Okay, this regular board meeting of the Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law and I wanted to just extend a warm welcome to everyone present. Thank you for taking time tonight out of your evening to come and be with us and also to our television viewers. The Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent and her staff. Just want to ask you right now if you could turn off your phones to silent, which I will do also right now, if you have not already done so. We just really appreciate the time that you've taken to join us and for your interest in Waco ISD. I also wanted to share that all of our board meetings are available on the Waco ISD YouTube page the Monday following a meeting. YouTube offers that option to select your subtitle language, making the information presented here tonight available to everyone. Simply go to the settings via the gear icon, choose subtitles, and then choose your preferred language. Este junta regular de Waco ISD está convocada. Les extendo un amable bienvenidos a todos los que están presente y los que nos observan por televisión. También les quiero compartir que todas las conferencias son disponibles en la página de Waco ISD YouTube el lunes después de la conferencia. En esta página pueden escoger su idioma así toda la información que fue discutida está disponible para todos. Por favor, de apagar tu teléfono celular les agradecimos el tiempo que compartimos con nosotros y su interesante interés, excuse me, in Waco ISD. Okay, moving on, excuse me, to item, to public comments on agenda item. I have two people who have signed up. Sorry, I have to read here. The Board encourages comments about open meeting agenda items from members of the public. Anyone who is signed up to speak in advance of the meeting in accordance with Board procedures will do so in accordance with the law. Board policy and Board rules. Board rules require that each speaker's comments pertain to an open meeting agenda item unless adjusted by a presiding officer. Comments by each speaker will be no longer than three minutes per the, so that's per time limit in BED local. And I will ask the Board Secretary, Mr. Davis, to be our timekeeper. Mr. Davis, would you just please let any patron addressing the Board know when they just have one minute left, so give them a little bit of a warning, and then when they've reached their allotted time to speak. So here I have, our first is Mary Jane Waits, and she is speaking on DEC local.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ms. Courtivee, trustees, and Dr. Kinkanon. I'm Mary Jane Waits, and I'm the Regional Membership Specialist for the Association of Texas Professional Educators in the Region 12 District. On behalf of the nearly 350 ATPE members in Waco ISD, I want to express ATPE support for Consent Agenda Item 8.K., which reauthorizes this district's catastrophic sick leave bank. We appreciate the Board's willingness to reinstate this important employee benefit as it was omitted in the June 27th, June 7th, 2021 adoption of an update of DEC local. The opportunity to participate in the catastrophic sick leave bank empowers Waco ISD employees to plan ahead for their family's financial well-being in cases of serious illness and prolonged hospitalization. We thank the Board and the Administration for their continued efforts to support the employees of Waco ISD. ATP is available to serve as a resource for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waits. Okay, next up, we have Hope Musticum.
Good evening. It's not like a microphone where you sing. I just wanted to speak on Agenda Item 10, which was the safety of the new school designs for Tennyson, Carver, and Waco High. Two of those schools my own children will be attending, nonetheless, where 14,000 other students that I've always considered, when I talk about my kids, usually people get confused because I'm actually talking about all the students in Waco ISD. But I can't, the reason why I continue to come up and speak is not because I actually enjoy it. I don't know if you guys know what the Enneagram is. I'm not an eight, I'm a seven. So we actually don't enjoy confrontation. But I do come from a deep place of as a social worker and a person of faith, that I've always been taught to speak up for the marginalized or people that are being silenced. And I was a Girl Scout for 12 years, and so it's just ingrained in me and which has left me perpetually misunderstood. But nonetheless, I'm still here because I don't want to ever look back on a day where we're the next tragedy, we're the next hashtag. And also, having teachers and staff and students and principals come to me, a community activist, an organizer, a social worker, with their tears and fears and frustrations, and for me to also feel frustrated because we're not being heard as community, as parents, as professionals in the community. Commander Wallace wrote a report that told us that the designs were not the safest and we had better options. We have principal, and I know you guys toured some of the schools with staff and principals recently, and they expressed they did not like it. I get DMs from teachers and principals, "We're going to cover those walls immediately. If there are glass, we're covering them. That's a terrible idea." A kid will throw a desk through it. I mean, you hear the fears, and I know you're hearing them, and I can't imagine a time when aesthetic is more important than not only the literal safety where you guys have okayed your police department to get ballistic shields and the risk was high enough to justify that fund, those funds being spent. Without it being equally, if the risk is there, then why aren't we also considering that in the design? But primarily, I'm, what I'm concerned about also, besides the adults and their fears and concerns, are the children. As a social worker who deals with teens and people in crisis and traumatized individuals, the sense of safety is very important. And in a recent letter that one of our trustees wrote to the TRIB expressed how a certain population of our students do face fear everywhere they go. I don't think the school is a place where they should also be facing those types of fear of their physical safety. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Musticum. Excuse me. We will now go to our moment of silence. I would just ask those of you to, along with me, we're going to take a pause right now Now we will move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the Board would meet me down in front of the dais, please.
Each month, one campus selects two students to lead the Pledge of Allegiance at the regular business meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. For the month of October, Miranda Ramirez and Kayden Kemp from Providence Heights Elementary were selected for this honor. Miranda's in the fifth grade and her favorite subject is math. She has four dogs and one cat and loves going to the beach in Galveston. When she grows up, Miranda wants to be a hairstylist. Thank you to her parents, Jessica Valdez and Martin Ramirez, for sharing your wonderful daughter with us. Kayden is also in the fifth grade and also loves math. He likes to go to church with his grandma, watching Spider-Man and riding his bike. When he grows up, Kayden wants to be a YouTuber. Thank you to his mother, Janaya Jackson, for sharing your amazing son with us, and thank you to Principal Courtney Whitaker for being here tonight. Thank you. And to begin special recognitions for tonight, our first is the National Merit Commended Scholar. The National Merit Scholarship Program is a national academic competition for high school students to provide financial aid to attend college. It is administered by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. Students qualify for the National Merit Program by achieving a high score on the PSAT. The test is more formally called the PSAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. Tripp Wendell, Waco High School senior, has been named a National Merit Commended Scholar for the National Merit Scholarship Program based on his outstanding performance on the preliminary SAT and the NMSQT for 2021. Tripp is among 34,000 commended students from across the nation who are being recognized as part of the National Merit Program. Commended students are those who placed among the top 5% of 1.5 million students who earned the 2023 Merit Program by taking the 2021 PSAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. Congratulations. Next, we have our Some Dog Math Competition. The National Some Dog Math Competition is a nationwide competition open to all private and public schools. Each competition's students and class have one week to answer 1,000 math questions aligned to their grade level. Students compete online individually or as a team. The class or team win the highest percentage of correct answers and speed wins the competition. Over 2,900 classrooms from all 50 states competed in this year's Some Dog National Competition, and Mr. Greg Ober's third-grade team of eight students from Hillcrest PDS Elementary Magnet won the national title. The team answered 8,000 grade-level questions at 95.3% accuracy. Five of the eight team members finished in the top 30 out of 26,000 competitors, with one student finishing in the top 10. Congratulations to the winning team members. John Paul Pena, top 10. J.C. Enzavala, top 30. Cohen Callaway, top 30. Giovanni Perez, top 30. Brooks Helt, top 30. Aubrey Montoya. Jada Martin. And Mayne Caspi. And I think we would like to take a group picture with Mr. Aubrey. Oubre, I apologize. Congratulations. Next, we have the Laura Bush Foundation for America's Libraries Grant. Mrs. Billiard, fourth-grade math and science teacher at Cedar Ridge PDS Elementary, applied for and received a $5,000 Laura Bush Foundation Grant for the America's Libraries. The foundation awarded 1.5 million library grants to 300 school libraries from 44 states across the country. The funds will be used to purchase new library materials for grades pre-K through fifth And University High School earns Reader's Choice Award. University High School has earned the title of Favorite Public High School for the 2022 Waco Tribune-Herald H.O.T. Reader's Choice Awards. Nominations were made from June 1st to June 19th, and the voting period was open from August 7th through August 21st. Congratulations to University High School. Each month, Waco ISD recognizes a community partner making a difference for students with Waco ISD. With the award for Outstanding Community Partners, the recognition celebrates the theme for the 22-23 school year, Lead From The Heart, and acknowledges the impact that our community partners make in the lives of our students and staff. In October, the district is recognizing the Extraco Event Center for facilitating the use of the base as a reunification location during a recent district emergency. They also play a key role in community by engaging and supporting students at the heart of Texas Fair and Rodeo.
We have one more special recognition this evening. It is Trustee Guillory's birthday. So let's give him, should we sing "Happy Birthday"?
No.
No. We'll give him a round of applause. Okay, we are on to item number five. That is Superintendent's Report.
All right, good evening. Let me get this microphone situated here. Few items to report this evening. First item is our Thanksgiving family meals. Beginning next week, our families will begin, are enjoying our Thanksgiving meals at our schools. And as you know, this is a special tradition for our students, staff, and families, and I want to thank our Child Nutrition Services Team for their planning and preparation efforts. Calendar that we have developed, that they've developed, is on the screen, and we'll be communicating that out on our website, on social media accounts, and in our newsletters. Two important things to note there. The first is that this year we have both lunch and dinner Thanksgiving meals. We have some campuses that have special events tied to their meals and/or they were out of space, and so they're going to have them in a larger cafeteria. So that's unique this year, and we expect to have more attendees as a result of that. So we're excited for that. Next is our GW Carver Middle School Student Ambassadors. You all know that construction is underway for the new Carver Middle School, and so too are our efforts to engage our students in this exciting work. We have 40 students who will be participating in a student ambassadors group with the goal of supporting the campus culture and developing ownership in the new building. And we also want to expose those students to some hands-on learning regarding the design and construction industries. Students who are participating in the group will be able to connect what they see on the job site with classroom learning through site visits and planned activities with some of the trades professionals who are working on the school. Their first site visit was scheduled for today, but after Monday's much-needed rainfall, the visit was rescheduled to next Thursday to allow for better access to the site, and we're excited about that group. Next is the GW Carver, also related but completely different. This is an art project design, and this is our Carver Historical Alumni Group who is continuing to meet. Over the last several weeks, they have met with an artist to look at artifacts, talk about memories and key milestones, and to support the design of a new feature, an interior feature, that will be inside of the building to honor the history of the school, and it will be a custom art installation inside of GW Carver. So we've had a lot of fun visiting with the artist and bringing in some of the alumni to visit with him and looking at facts, artifacts. Yesterday, one of the artifacts that we had was a record from 1957, 63. It was 1963 that was a recording of the band, the GW Carver Middle School Band, or High School Band, and so that was really cool. So the artist is looking at all of those and will be coming up with a concept after he gets the story and feels the project. So we appreciate Mr. Perkins, who has been participating, Ms. Ruth Jackson, and Mr. Sims, who graduated the year after integration in 1971 over in La Vega, but had gone to GW Carver all the way up until that point. And so he's been really fantastic to participate as well, so pretty cool. It's also been a joy this month to watch our high school fine arts programs showcase their work with the productions of Waco High School's Into The Woods and University High School's Moana Junior. I was impressed with the talents of our student and I know, students, and I know that their friends, family, and community members that attended one of the six performances were as well. And I'd like to note that I learned that all of the Waco High School costumes were designed by one of the students, and they were just absolutely gorgeous, two fantastic performances. And we also brought back a tradition of hosting a superintendent's reception on opening night in one of the productions. This year it was at University High School. Next year it will be for Waco High School. And so I'd like to thank our University High School for hosting that, and the Culinary Arts students and staff for their incredible island-inspired bites for attendees at Moana Junior. And we even had, I forgot the name of it, but it had the Spam, a fancy Spam on a rice cake. There's a name for that.
Masubi.
A masubi, yes. I did not eat the masubi, but it looked really pretty. But it was really fun. Finally, staff appreciation and wellness activities. Our district administrators and campus administrators have been taking steps, big and small, to share appreciation and promote wellness among our employees. Some of the activities planned for the month of October, which we've been referring to as Rocktober, because that's a time that people typically, there's a dip in motivation and people get really tired in October, so we're just really trying to keep the energy up. And so we held our first-ever administration building employee trick-or-treat event, which was a huge success. We had a lot of employees come and bring their children. That was Tuesday night. We've had some, we have a special movie planned. We have some axe-throwing planned. We have car wash gift cards for Waco High School. We have some dirty cars over there with construction, and all kinds of fun things happening just to, just to keep people going this time of year. Also, thanks to our counseling and social-emotional learning team, there are various opportunities, and I see Ms. Helt there, and resources available for our staff year-round. I want to highlight two of those. One is our breakfast clubs, and we've held those on our staff in-service days this year, and they're at different campuses across the district, and that is really a time for central administration to connect with our employees, to honor them with our teachers, our staff, our auxiliary employees, and just, we're providing a light breakfast and building connections with our employees, and that's been a fun time. Our next one will be December 2nd. And then the second project is, is the Self-Care Project, Employee Fitness Projects. And I know Dr. Gutierrez has gone, she went to one this week, in fact. And this is, six times a week at five different schools, employees have access to fun workouts and fellowship led by our coaches. And the participating locations are Waco High, University High, Providence Heights, Kendrick, Indian Spring Carver, and Indian Spring Carver. And so employees can go and get in a good workout and have some fun. So we'll continue to circulate information to encourage our employees and staff to participate in those fitness opportunities, and it's just been a busy, fun month in Waco ISD. Thank you.
Thank you. Sounds very fun, actually. Okay, so we'll move on to item six, public meeting on the 2029, 22, not 29, Annual Financial Accountability Management Report, School First. Cheryl.
So annually, we have to present the results in a public meeting of our School First Report. Now, this information is a little bit on the old side because by the time we report it and TEA puts it together, it's usually about a little over a year old. This is our 22 report. This School First, to sort of match the instructional accountability, they authorized it in 1999, and they developed this School First system, which was first implemented in the year 2000. So the goal is to measure the achievement in the finance side of school districts on various factors. So the ratings, there's 20 indicators. They reduced them for a while, a number of years when they redid the system, but we're all the way back up to 20 indicators. There are five critical indicators, nine solvency indicators, and six financial competence indicators. nine solvency indicators and six financial competence indicators. The critical indicators, for the most part, are yes-no answers, like, did you get your financial report in on time or not? You know, so if you miss any of those critical indicators, you automatically, in most cases, will fail School First. And there are some, another measurement are ceiling indicators. These were new last year. And they limit the maximum total points available. So in a couple of the critical indicators, you can not fail School First, but you will not be able to get like the highest rating if you don't get the total points. And then the other indicators are based on a zero to 10 points. And that's based on performance to a scale that they have established. So the district requirements on the annual management report, we include the results on the School First indicators. It's published by the Texas Education Agency. And then we have to explain the performance on those indicators as compared to the prior year. So you all have the detailed book in front of you. So, and this is also posted on our website. That gives you the detailed information for each indicator on how we performed this year and compares it to how we performed last year. And then again, like I said, we need to have the public hearing. And the notice of the public hearing has to be posted in the local newspaper. And then the public hearing is, of course, designed to receive public input. The critical indicators, there are, as I said, five of them. And one is, was the annual financial audit reported by the January 28th deadline. Was there an unmodified opinion in the annual financial report? I know unmodified sounds kind of weird, but that's CPA talk for good. Was the district in compliance with payment terms in all debt agreements? That we pay all of our bond debt on time? And did we make timely payments to other agencies, particularly teacher retirement, Texas Workforce Commission, Internal Revenue Service and any other agencies that we would, might owe money to? And then what's the total unrestricted net position? Greater than zero. We don't want to have a net position less than zero. This is not actually scored because we do have a net position less than zero. All districts in Texas pretty much have a net position less than zero at this point because a few years back, we had to incorporate our share of the state pension liability and the state other post-employment benefits, which is TRS care for retirees. And when we did that, that decreased our net position by, I think, one of them was about 50 million and the other one was probably about $60 million. So almost all districts in Texas have a negative net position because of having to incorporate that information. We will look at that when we look at our annual financial report. So then these are the solvency indicators. And it looks at our change in our average fund balance and how much cash on hand we have. Then the major, some of the traditional financial ratios that you might see, current assets to current liabilities. Did we, did the revenues cover expenditures? Or did we have enough cash on hand to, that was greater than 60 days? Was the variance comparing budgeted revenues? Now, this was one that was new a couple of years ago. And I don't, I don't know if it's actually ever been measured because about the time that they put this one in place for us to measure how well we're estimating our budgeted revenue, well, you know, COVID hit, our revenues really went off the charts. So they're not measuring this one right now. And then the long-term liabilities to total assets and then the debt. This one, we may lose some points on next year with our bond issuances. But they look at the debt per hundred dollars of assessed property valuation and that ratio. The administrative cost ratio, which is the one we always lose points on. And then was there not a 15% decline in students to staff ratio over three years? And in spite of our cuts that we've had, we have not really impacted that. Then our financial competence indicators looks at ADA within the allotted range of our projection. We have a projection that's now due because we do that at the beginning of each legislative session. It's due December 14th, I think, this year. Again, that one's not getting measured because districts were so far off in their estimates because of COVID. And then did the comparison of PMS data to the information that we submit have a variance of less than 3%? We do really well on this one every year. Did the external auditor report, any annual financial report was free of material weaknesses? And, and these are looking at mostly our internal controls and how we control the expenditures and reporting for our financial data. And then did the, also did the external auditor, was it free of any instances of material non-compliance? And this is with most of our grant requirements, which has been really extensive over the last couple of years. And was required financial information posted on our website? I don't know that any of you have looked at our financial transparency webpage. It's very, it's got a lot of information out there. A lot of that information is required by the state for us to post. And then did we discuss the property values at a board meeting within 120 days of adopting the budget? That's one of the things we did this summer. May and June, we talked about the values. So also included in the report, there's some required disclosures. We have to have a copy of the superintendent's current contract, a schedule of any lodging, meals, travel and other reimbursements to the superintendent and board members. Then any schedule of outside compensation paid to the superintendent, which there was none. Schedule of any gifts with an aggregate value in excess of $250 to the superintendent and board. And a schedule of business transactions between board members and the district. This is the determination of the ratings. Again, superior achievement is 90 to 100 points. Above standard, a B is 80 to 89, C 70 to 79 and on down to, you can get an F. And you could also get no rating. If your data was late or it was too bad for TEA to be able to evaluate the indicators, then you can get no rating. You get substandard achievement and they will file sanctions against you. And sometimes will assign a financial monitor or do an accreditation investigation. So, once again, Waco ISD did get an A, a superior achievement. And we scored the same as last year, 98 out of 100 points. So we scored yes on all the critical indicators. We got a maximum of points on the solvency indicator except indicator 13. As I said, that's the administrative cost ratio. And then we scored the maximum points on all the financial competence indicators. This is the administrative cost ratio. As you can see, Waco ISD, the largest district size that they measure administrative cost on is 10,000. So we fall in the same group as Houston ISD for their administrative cost ratio. And it tends to, since it's divided by the number of students, you know, you'll end up, and a lot of times the smaller the district, the more, you know, or the higher the number, I guess, when it's divided over the salaries. So it's not unusual for a district our size to not get the maximum points here. But we do score very close. We scored at 9.8, 9.78 this year. It was 9.84% last year. So we were a little bit better than we were the year before. So we do, as I said, we have a copy of the School First Report. I have a couple of copies available if somebody in the audience would like a copy. But it is available on our financial transparency website. And you can also get copies from the Public Information Office upon request. That's it. We're timed for any public input.
I don't think there's, is there any input from the public? Any questions? Okay, we will move on to item number seven. Ms. Davis, I believe that's you again. 7A report on 2022 delinquent tax collection.
No, actually, these are, this is just a new way of organizing the agenda. So what we've done for you, because you're not taking action on these items, we've typically put them in with the consent agenda. We're just pulling them out and separating them out in the agenda for you this evening. So it's not our intention to present all of those things. But we would be happy to answer any questions if the board had any, wanted to talk about any of those reports. But that's just a new structure for organizing them. So there's no action required on those. And we do have Robert Meyer here this evening. If you were to have any questions on the 2022, I think I saw him, delinquent tax collection report. But otherwise, those are information for, for the board. And assume you've all reviewed them and we just want to, want to provide them in a different format.
Thank you. I actually do have a question, Ms. Davis. Or Cheryl, if I could ask you a couple of questions on monthly quarterly financial reports ending August 31st, 2022. Just had a couple of questions because I saw some things that I thought, well, on page 92 of the comparison to school year 2021, 22. Do you see it on page 92? Other uses of funds? Sorry, you're going to have to flip through a lot of pages. No, so, so the question that I had was, I know that we have that deficit to cover day school, the death and the guama, guaca. But I was really surprised at the advanced healthcare academy is, for that deficit. Typically, that's usually the one that has a smaller deficit. I was just curious about that.
It did not this year. And I think we did add, you know, you reach a point with class sizes and stuff that you have to add maybe a staff member or something. And because the programs are rather small, I think that kind of adds to it. And then there was a loss in students for both programs to some extent because, and I think probably Dr. Kinkanen could talk to that as well. But because the kids were behind in credits, especially in core subjects, they weren't able to take some of the advanced CTE courses like they normally would. So it's hopefully.
It's COVID. It's the impact of COVID.
It's the lag from COVID. Okay. I, I had figured that, but I just thought, well, that's a, it was just unusual. I hadn't really seen that. And then I also was wondering on page 97, statement of revenues expenditures, changes in fund balance. I noticed two things that kind of stood out to me. One was the tuition and fees. And that went up by 224% year-to-date of budget. Just wondering, are we getting more, is that from pre-K or what's that?
Primarily, yes, that's from pre-K. That's the only thing we've charged tuition fees for now.
Wow.
So that's the ineligible kids that are attending our pre-K program.
Wow. Okay. Yeah, that was surprising.
But remember, we, I don't know this for a fact. We could verify. But remember, we lost some students during the pandemic. So then they would have been coming back. So you would have seen an increase. Yeah, true. But we have pre-K 3 and we have pre-K 4.
A lot of parents kept pre-K kids home during.
Yeah, so this is probably the increase of that. And then noticed also extracurricular activities, 200% of budget. And I thought, kids coming to football games and basketball games, is that the result of that?
Well, in the last two years, those, and I did probably build the budget based on the last couple of years. And they did come back. So we really didn't have a lot of events even for 2021, hardly at all.
Yeah, I was just, I just noticed that. And I thought, well, you know, this last game that we had gone to, we had walked, kind of were outside. And I just thought, oh, this is really great. It feels like a typical high school football game, parents and kids and just this excitement. And so I was just curious if that was one of the byproducts of that. And then the last question I have on this is our TIF. I noticed on our, if, this is page 98, I just had a question about TIF. I know that we have several. One has expired, but, or we're no longer contributing to that. I was just wondering, and you've told me this before, but if you could just remind me when those other TIF.
Actually, two of them are now done. TIF number two actually finished before TIF number one. It wasn't supposed to. But they went ahead and closed that out and sent us the remaining funds from TIF number two in last year during the year. I think we received about a million and a half dollars, about 300,000 of that was, went to the debt service fund. The rest of it went to the general fund. TIF number one, we unfortunately will probably not get whatever's left over in it because they extended the life and boundaries of it. And we did not participate in that extension because we can't under state funding. We would lose that hold harmless that we had. And so we, we were done as of the current year. There was some, a little bit of a disagreement between TEA and the city. It was actually ending. The city kind of thought we were going to contribute during this year. But TEA and the comptroller's office said it was done as of last year. And so the city was gracious enough to let us go ahead and get out of it since we weren't going to get our money back from the state for it. So that's done. The small one that has barely anything in it, number three, ends in 2026.
2026.
It's a very small one and it's not even active, I don't think, at this time.
Okay, okay. Perfect. Thank you. That is all my questions for you, Ms. Davis. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Oh, gosh, I'm, I'm that person right now. But I do have a question on some of the emergent bilingual evaluation programming. It was Ms. Benson. Is she here? Okay. Well, it, it, okay.
Dr. Cornblum might be able to answer your question.
Yes, Dr. Cornblum. I'm sorry, I did not. Where is it? Hi, Dr. Cornblum. Thank you so much. The, on some of this emergent bilingual ESL UP students. Okay, so page, let's just go to page 154. And that would be, I believe the report is, I'm not sure if you can pull that up for everyone. I feel like I should share my screen with you here. Thank you. Just DeGrent.
I've got it in front of me. Let's see if I can.
All right, there we go. I just noticed on like star math grade four, we have TEA's thing. And then we have Waco ISD and we have Approaches Meets Masters. And we had.
So that means we didn't have any masters on, that's why there's a missing column there. It's just zero.
So from.
I see it now. Yes.
Okay, so then we just, no masters, but we have 100% on approaches and me. Correct. Gotcha, gotcha. And this is, are these the same kids? Is this the same cohort going up that we're?
For fourth grade?
For fourth grade.
Yeah, well, it would be the same, yes, cohort.
Kids kind of going into the thing. Okay. Yeah, that was kind of the question. I thought, it seems that way to me that it's the same cohort of kids kind of as we're monitoring year one and year two. I was just wanting that clarification. And then there was one that was really surprising to me. With all the hundreds.
Monitor, you're a monitored year two. So there probably were very few students in that group.
Monitored means they're, when a student exits, then we continue to monitor them to ensure their progress. And then if a student isn't progressing, then you would take them back to their LPAC committee and possibly recommend putting them back into the program for lack of progress. Or they, they would show that they still need those supports.
And it was the percentage of kids, and there's, there's so many graphs here. I'm like trying to.
So let me go back and clarify. The kids in there that you're looking at is one group of kids. But on your monitored status, that middle where that says monitored, that's not actually the group. That's going to be your monitored kids year one. So this is our first year being monitored. And then, does that make sense? And then, does that make sense?
Yep.
And then monitored second year, yep.
Okay, and then if we go to the demographics of our programming, from LEP students to bilingual or emergent bilingual to ESL, page 123, it's almost towards the top of the. It's after the demographic, yeah, so the demographics. So I added up those numbers and that's 6,180 students, which is like 45% of our population. Yeah. Forty, like 45, I, I, for some reason.
It just, yeah.
I was like, wow, I, yeah.
So just thinking about that, that, this is also why it makes it so important that we're moving to that dual language program to try to really strengthen because we have a very large population of English learners, so.
Okay, yeah, I was just double checking that, if making sure that I was reading that correctly. And I just wanted to congratulate Grace Benson for being a member of the TEA Newcomber Community of Practice.
She's awesome. Grace is wonderful. And just pointing out in that ESL there, that represents a large, well, not a large, but it represents some different possibilities. So you could have, in your ESL group, you could have students whose parents may be denied bilingual services. So they would go into an ESL classroom. Or you could also have a student, say, whose first language was German. And, well, we don't have, you know, bilingual services for that. So they would be put into an ESL classroom for teachers who have their special skills to meet their needs.
Are we still practicing, this is like 22 years ago. But typically, we had like a teacher per grade level to make sure that they were ESL certified.
Well, we want them all to be ESL certified. That's the goal.
Great goal.
Because, well, it's best practice anyway. But, but we do have a large population, but then also all the strategies that you would use with ESL students, you would use with struggling students as well. And so it's just best practice to have that.
Okay. But that, that was all the questions that I had. Did anyone else have any questions?
I do. Can you explain the monitored year one and two? You said the same groups or do they?
No, I went back and clarified. The monitored doesn't mean same group. Your kids in your scores, you're looking at that, that group of kids. But a monitored year one. So let's say that my TELPOS came back and I showed proficient and my, my star scores, there's criteria to exit, and so I exit because we think that you have reached language proficiency. So we're required to continue monitoring them to ensure that they continue to progress. And if they don't, then we're required to meet and put them back in. So that monitored year one, it is the group of kids that are in year one there. But then when I go to monitored year two, it changes to kids or year two. But if I'm a monitored year one and I fail, I could go back. So it's not as if they'll necessarily travel together like a graduation cohort or something.
So it's two different groups. One group is on year one and one group is in year two.
Correct.
Got you.
And we do the same thing for students in special education. We monitor them to ensure that they're, they're, you know, solid and don't need extra.
Any other questions? Okay, Dr. Cornblum, thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Also wanted to thank on the reports and gifts, Magnolia, Total Office Solutions, Mighty Window Worship Center, Ascension Providence, Sports Medicine. And then is that a beef?
Gift that, the group that we recognized last month that provided the teacher kits, all those kits for our new teachers.
Yeah.
I forgot how to say the name, but yes, that's the group that the board recognized last month.
Yeah, just the tremendous donations and gifts that our community is giving to our district and to the kids and to the teachers to support them. We're just so thankful for that. Okay, we will move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled on the consent? Okay, hearing none. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Vedanya. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Grant. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to item nine, review and discuss reading recovery program. That is, sorry, Ms. Barnell.
Hello, how are y'all today?
Good.
So I wanted to come and give y'all kind of an overview of the new exciting program that we started this past year, reading recovery. And you may ask, what, what is reading recovery? So basically, it's, it's an intervention that we do, but it's a 12 to 20 week program for first grade students. And again, the way it's, it's been rolled out is this past year, it's led by teachers that are getting intensive professional development that lasts throughout the entire year. Now, Waco's getting this professional development through TWU, through graduate coursework. And it's designed, it's one-to-one tailored lessons. And it also, and that's what's kind of unique about this because it's individualized, but it's also based on what that learner needs, their interest and what they need. So how this kind of started, as you know, we have a huge initiative with literacy in Waco ISD. And we know specifically that early literacy was important. And then kind of COVID impacted that even more. So we had some of the extra stimulus funds from ESTR, two and three. And so based on that, we knew that we could launch this program. So it started back in when we received the ESTR funding. And started planning in 2020, rolled it out last year. But basically, the ESTR funding is being used for the salaries. And then it's also used to pay for the tuition for the ladies attending and also the materials, the books that's needed. And so basically, in 2021, we had our three teacher leaders that I'll talk about, but that encompassed their salaries, their stipends, and then all the materials and trainings that we bought for them. This year, it's about over 400,000, 416,000. That includes the salaries for the teachers that are the teacher leaders. Again, it includes all the materials we bought because we expanded the program, and I'll talk about that in a minute. It also talks about that training. And then we also have money set aside in ESTR for next year for 22, 23. And that's around 265,000. And that just is basically for the treaty, for the training, because we purchased all the materials by them. And the funding also includes a stipend for the lead reading recovery teachers because, and I'll talk about it in a minute, but they've spent lots of extra time and effort because they received classes at the doctoral level till they got a stipend. And we started back in the spring of 2021, posted the jobs, interviewed lots of people. And we were very lucky to get three ladies that had extensive reading literacy coaching experience. So you can see they're pictured, Nancy Alvarado, and then we had Deborah Byford and Elaine Humphries. Nancy unfortunately has left because she's not a, she's not AP at Crestview. That was her ultimate goal, so we wanted to support her in that. But we still have two ladies that are considered our lead teachers. So kind of what's the overall instructional component? So basically, they're, let me back up a little bit, sorry. You look at, the first step is identifying the students. So what they do is they work with the first grade teachers and they look at the bottom 20% of each teacher's class. And that's based on the multiple sources of data we use that I kind of talked about our last meeting. We use the VAS testing, we use the Renaissance, they use writing samples. And then after they've identified the bottom 20%, then they go in and do the observation survey of early literacy achievement. And then based on that, meeting with the first grade teachers, they work together to determine which four students they're going to work with. And again, it's a 30-minute lesson and it's one-to-one. And then the program runs anywhere from 12 to 20 weeks. And what's so unique about this, and I'm probably going to say this many times during this presentation, but it's based on the individual learner and what they need at that time. And so you have to be, become very skilled on how to interpret, interpret live reading data. It's called a running record, figure out what that student needs, and then apply that immediately to that lesson. And it's again, very student-centered. It looks at the unique learning needs of the student each day. And then, of course, they're doing their progress monitoring, and that's what's called a running record. So every day, they're doing a running record. And then based on the data from that day, they figure out, okay, this is what I need to work on the next day. And that's a huge principle that we are working with all of our teachers on in guided reading in, in the elementary levels. We work with our sit teachers on that in tier three. So it's just a great way to really individualize and meet each learner's needs based on the reading behaviors. So basically, a lesson, so this is what they do during that 30-minute time. And they are going to, they're going to look at the book. So the book's based on the student's instructional level. So you start all the way from zero up to 18. And that's kind of from K to first grade level. So based on the, where the student placed, they pull the student, they do a reread of the book that they worked on yesterday. And again, they're applying those skills that that student needs to work on. After they do that, then they're going to do a running record, again, to see what behaviors, reading behaviors the student might be needing to work on. So they're writing those down. Then they do the word work. And the word work encompasses basically, maybe working on letters. We still have lots of students here learning their basic letters, working on sounds, and it may be working on putting words together and the letters together to form the sounds. I'm sorry, the letters to form the words. Then they go into the next part, which is basically the application. So they worked on the letters, they worked on the words. So how do you put that into form a sentence or a story? And again, that's what's neat about this is because they're combining the reading strategies with their writing and putting it together. After they do the word work, they write a sentence, they cut it up, they put it back together. And again, that's helping them focus on their comprehension. And after they do all that, then they read a new book, which is called a cold read. So that's kind of the lesson components. Do you have any questions over that? I'm going fast, so if you do, please stop me.
I gotta touch just in general.
Mm-hmm.
So one of these teachers needs one of the students for 30 minutes and then goes on to the next student. It was all day, that one teacher, he needed 30 minutes.
So they have four students they work with. And so, and I'll talk about it kind of just in a minute, how the lead, you're good, what the lead teachers do versus what we're doing this year. And so, but it's, it's just four students and it's one-on-one for 30 minutes, and then they go on to the next. But again, what's most unique about this program, what's most exciting to me is that we're providing the students the tools. So then when they're working with those students in that one-to-one, they're reminding them of what they need to work on and apply to the classroom. So the big thing, things they focus on is called MSB. And basically, that's looking at the meeting. So did that make sense to you? Tell me, when you read that, did that make sense? So again, you're prompting the students, you're teaching them to learn how to listen for meaning. Then you're teaching them how to look for the structure. Did the structure, does that look right to you? You know, that starts with the letter P, but you said something that started with a B. So let's talk about that. What does it look like? And then visually, does that look right to you? So again, they're reinforcing this when a student does something right. Hey, you used the picture to figure that out. Or hey, that didn't sound right, you went back and corrected it. So again, they're reinforcing those strategies that we all need to be good readers. And that's the missing link that these students don't have. And the ultimate goal is for them to go back to their classroom, and they're going to generalize that when they're in their classroom. They may not be on grade level by that time, but again, they've learned the skills they need. So when they come to a word they don't know, they know how to figure it out. So that's the ultimate goal of this program. Any questions over that? So our first year, basically, we had the three ladies and they attended doctoral classes through TWU. And Waco ISD paid for that. And it was an intensive program. They did weekly Zoom classes. They went up to TWU once a month and stayed three or four days. They had several week-long conferences they had to attend. So they put lots of their time and energy away from their families into this program. Again, Waco paid for that and we paid for all that with the ESTR. And this is their first year, this is them at TWU and one of their graduate level classes. And so what they did is they were taking the classes, but they were also held accountable to teach them, teach the, the students. So we had them at three campuses. We specifically targeted or placed them at our campuses that were on school improvement. So they were at Dean Highland, Mountain View, and South Waco. So while they're taking the classes, what they're doing is they're learning how to implement the lessons and basically how to become a skilled observer of the students' literacy behaviors. They have to complete the weekly assessments, they had to do their running records, they had to track their growth. They also had to observe each other and practice coaching each other and providing feedback on how they can become better reading instructionists. And they also provided coaching to the first grade teachers on their campus. And so again, this is another thing that's exciting to me is we built the capacity of two people last year on how to coach the first grade and second grade teachers on how to become better reading teachers. Again, looking at that behaviors, what do we need to do to teach our students so they can learn when they come to a word they don't know, how do they figure it out? So we built that capacity. And again, these are just some pictures of them teaching the lessons, working on the word work or working on the letters. So this year, even more exciting, we've expanded it to 14 teachers. So we have 14 campuses that are engaging in this, plus we have our two lead teachers. Because we went down from three to two because Nancy is now eighty. So what we, we have our, still, we have our two lead teachers. So what those two lead teachers are now doing is they flipped. And now they're teaching graduate level courses to these 14, what we call reading recovery teachers in training. So every Friday afternoons or Thursdays, depending on the week, they go to West Avenue. And we basically, they're taking a graduate level course. And it's from one to four every day. And they're learning the techniques they need in order to be a reading recovery teacher. They're getting credit for that course also. And they're also continuing PD sessions. So for instance, today, we had TWU come down. TWU watched Elaine and Deborah on how they coached the teachers. And then TWU flipped and did coaching with Elaine and Deborah on what they need to do to become better coaches. And so again, and then Elaine and Deborah are going to the 14, 14 campuses once a week, watching those reading recovery teachers in training and coaching them on what they need to do. Any questions on that? And this is just some pictures we took of them. The first thing they do when they come meet on Friday is they get in a group circle and they talk about this week, what worked, what didn't work, that type of stuff. So again, the teachers are training, they're enrolled in a grad level course. And they, they are now teaching four students, one-to-one for 30 minutes. And again, they're receiving the coaching by the teacher leader, so we have two different clusters. They also do what's called behind the glass, and I should have got a picture of that. But basically, that's where they have a student, they're doing the reading recovery principles or practice. But then you have people behind a glass observing them. So you have all your 14 teachers that are working with you, observing you, taking notes. And then you come back and then you get feedback from these other ladies on what worked, what didn't work, and how you improve your trade. And they attend their regional reading recovery conference. But in addition to that, Mr. Grant, they also are supplemental teachers. So they're still, the rest of the day, providing tier-three intervention to students. And again, what's kind of neat about this, not kind of, but basically, they do the program called LLI, which is a guided reading approach. But they're learning how to take those skills from the one-to-one to apply it to their groups of five to six, sometimes eight students, on how to look at the behaviors, how to teach the students to take what they're doing, how to correct themselves, learn the strategies, and then apply it back to the classroom. Any questions over that? Did that answer your question? So then we look at year three next year. And so next year, we're going to have basically, well, not basically, we will have 16 teachers trained in the reading recovery process. And again, it's a year-long process. So in spring, they're going to take a second graduate level course, have that every Friday or Thursday, and then again, finish kind of the overall practice. And they're going to continue to work with the four students for 30 minutes, one-to-one. And again, what's, what's exciting to me is we've now built the capacity. We now have 16 intensively trained teachers who are now going to flip. And they're going to be on campuses and they're going to be able to coach our first and second grade teachers on effective reading strategies and how to build those to improve our overall literacy. The reading recovery teachers are going to continue to coach the reading recovery teachers. We're also going to build their capacity. They'll be doing more coaching with the first and second-grade teachers, and then they'll, of course, continue, they have to attend yearly trainings and conferences. Any questions so far?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So is the limit four students, or is it number of first-grade teachers?
So it's four students for the entire first grade. It's not per first-grade teacher.
Okay.
We could effectively do that, but then we also have our other students that we, you know, need to work. But the minimum is, for reading recovery, you have to have at least four. So we couldn't go two, but we could continue to go higher if they wanted to. But the minimum is four. Any other questions over that?
I've got a question. This, this sounds fantastic, but it also seems like it's a lot of work for the people that have agreed to do this. I realize that there's a stipend, but are there places that we pull back on responsibility, or is this just an extra load, an extra burden, that the stipend is supposed to soften?
It's a lot on these teachers. So what I've done to compensate them, because besides the fact that they're having to take on reading recovery, they also have their other duties, is basically given them extra duty pay, because they're having to do the grad-level work, they're also having to plan, basically, two different planning. But I also didn't want to take away from our other tier-three students who needed their intervention. So they're getting compensated, they get so many hours during the week to do their lessons, prep it, and then they're also, we're paying for the grad-level class. And then again, we made a strategically placement that they would take the class during the day. We didn't want to expect them to have to stay after school and take a three-hour level class.
I have a question about retention. I know you had mentioned one of the teachers that went through the program, she's now a principal. So do we have a plan to keep those reading recovery leads and teachers?
He's associate principal.
Okay, associate principal.
I think that's what we're going to look at, Dr. Cannon and our Dr. Corin. We could kind of look at that. When the SRR funds, we have to look at the data, and strategically, you know, what program made the best gains. And you can kind of look at the gains. Do you want to address that, Dr. Cannon, or?
Well, I think his question is, how do we keep these teachers in this program, right? And I think that these teachers were chosen to do this, and it was an honor to be chosen, and I think that they'll stick with it, but I don't know them individually. And they may, you know, they may opt to do other things, but we didn't put anything in place to, to say that they had to stay there for five years, or, you know, we're just, we're just training them up to do this, and we'll continue to train teachers. And so we're just kind of multiplying from those original three.
Right, and we talked about that again with them today, because I do check on them. I go once a month, I try to, how are you doing? What can I do to help? What can I do to support you? I know this is a heavy lift. Just think about next year, about how amazing it's going to be when you're working with these first-grade teachers and building their capacity. So I think it does make them feel good. I do, it is a lot on them, but, and Mr. Ochoa could probably speak to it, because his wife's one of them. But I feel, I feel like they're getting fulfillment from it. I think it's just, it's a lot right now, because it's a lot to do, but we are doing our best to compensate them and make them feel good about it. And again, the great thing about this is, is they're applying strategies when they're doing their tier-three intervention, and then they're working with those first-grade teachers on how to become better guided reading or reading teachers as far as literacy. And again, we know we have lots of first-year teachers, we have lots of teachers that need those skills, so we're just, again, you know, expanding the capacity to work with the teachers. So you're looking at the data, again, this is based-
Ms. Pernell, I'm so sorry, Mr. Giller, you had a question?
She's actually going into it. I wanted to, with the numbers, the data.
Yeah, so it's a little confusing, I know. So basically, when they do assessment, they're looking at three different things. They're looking at the letter identification, how many letters do you know? How many words did you know at the beginning? How many words when you exited? Then they're looking at the vocabulary, then they're looking at the hearing and sounding words, and then they do, basically, when we assess, they assess by numbers. So zero basically means you're a non-reader, you're a pre-primer. If you get to sixteen or eighteen, that means you're at the end of first grade, beginning second grade. Okay. So it's, in fall, they were able to do twenty weeks, in spring, they only did eleven. And fall kind of carried over a little bit to spring. So if you look, for example, the first student started at a zero and ended at a two. So when I look at that comparison, and I have a chart here, but basically, when we compare that to our BASS testing, what we do with our other students, a two is kind of the level B, and that's kind of mid-year. So we're going, basically, when you're looking at a school, it's a half a school year's growth within eleven to twenty weeks. So that student didn't make the growth we wanted. So he's probably one that I would go, wow, he didn't make the growth. So I wonder if there's other things going on. Maybe we need to do some additional testing. But then you look at the next, most of them pretty much went to eight. So if you go from a zero, again, a non-reader, beginning at kindergarten, and then you end up at a eight, that's basically November, end of November of your first-grade year. So those students made more than a year's growth within a twenty-week period. Then you get down to the fives, they started at a zero, non-readers, then you get to a five, that's basically the end of kindergarten. So they were non-readers, and within that twenty-week period, they made a year's school growth. Does that make sense? Spring, they didn't get to work as long. Again, fall ran over to January, but they did eleven weeks. So again, it's basically the same thing. So they, most of these students, again, this was January, they were still zeros. So, you know, they, again, COVID was a huge impact with our students. They basically, we had lots of students who didn't know their letters, so they were working with them. So beginning of the year kindergarten, and then they ended up within a year's growth. They were at the end of kindergarten, beginning of first grade. Yes, sir.
So the spring students are different students in the fall?
Yes, sir.
You start a new cohort, okay.
The only, the way the program's set up, you do a maximum of twenty weeks. And again, the basic principle is, and what I explained is, yes, they may not be on second-grade level, they're reading now, number one, and number two, they've learned the skills they need to know. So when they're in that classroom and they don't know a word, what do I need to do to figure that word out?
I have a question. If they select the student who started off at a zero and went to a two, do they get to, do they go into another program, or what?
Yes, sir, good question. So what they do is they're now tier-three, and so then they're rolled into our sit groups, which again, we're using LLI, which is kind of the same principle, but it's, it's a five or six students.
And is that a longer period of time when they get to the tier-three groups?
When they're in tier-three, we keep them in there as long as they need tier-three. And that's where we look at all that data we talked about. We're looking at the progress monitoring, the Renaissance, the BASS testing. What we're going to talk to our sit teachers about next week, because we have a PLC, is, okay, you've worked with these students, right? We had an intense year, basically, our big first year. If you still have these students and they're not making the progress, then I need you to start looking at that, taking them to what we call the SAT committee, and consider a special education referral. Because if we're not, if the students aren't making progress after that intense intervention, then there may be something else going on. So we want to make sure we rule that out.
Seems to be quite productive, hopeful. But we have SRR funding for another year.
So we have SRR two till September 2023, and then we have SRR four till September 2024.
And then after that, we just pray that we don't have a pandemic, but get extra money somewhere, or how do we do that?
Some great grants.
Okay.
There's lots of grants out there that we can apply for to try to continue.
But we've built a lot of capacity in people over the, with the use of our SRR funding, and we hope we can continue it, but we'll have to look at the budget and make some decisions on how to spend it.
I want to talk to the sit teachers about this, because they also know some of them. I'm like, well, my ultimate goal is, is that, again, our goal is to reduce the number of tier-three students, right? You're only supposed to have, you're always going to have tier-three students. That's just the norm of public education, but you should only have a certain percentage. Right now, our percentage is elevated. So if we do our job and we do it right, then we're not going to have as many tier-three students. You know, they joke, work me out of a job, get me out of here, so we don't need it. But you should always have tier-three. But that's the ultimate goal, so. But yeah, it's also about building capacity, the training that our sit teachers have gotten, and our reading recovery, whatever they do, it's going to help the literacy of Waco.
I got, I got some, I think it, I think this is great. I think it's a great program. My only concern is that we're training teachers, and we're paying for them to get this training and certification, and then they can leave us. So especially with our SRR funding, only being here for a limited time, I wish it was some way we could secure that investment for our students for a longer time. So just thank you for the work, but I would love for us to think kind of through that, of how we can secure that these teachers that we're training up, that they stay in our district, so we could have time to see a bigger impact on our students.
And that's a great point. And I will tell you, most of the teachers, I can think of two that are new to the district. Most of the teachers have been in Waco. So I mean, and we asked the principals, we need you to pick ten-year teachers. We need you to choose teachers that have taught Kinder and First, and understand what the foundational reading skills are. So that's what's kind of exciting, too, is I really feel like these ladies are invested in Waco to begin with, but they've also been here. So I feel like they know the importance, and they want to stay to help.
Ms. Pernell, thank you so much for this. Oh, sorry, Mr. Ochoa.
So the, the training materials outside of the TWU instructors, are those, is that a recurring cost, or is that, it's not like a college textbook, is it, where you have to keep buying the new edition every year?
So for next year, we won't have the TWU tuition. So even though our ladies are training, we had to pay TWU, so basically, they're the professors for the graduate-level courses. But once this year's class is done, then no, we won't have recurring tuition fees, unless we choose to expand it and bring a new class in next year.
Dr. Cornblum, you have something to?
I wanted to, I guess, share with you all, this is amazing, first off, and there are a lot of districts that don't have this, because it is an expensive program. And it, it does focus at first on a narrow number of kids, but we're talking about our kids who are struggling most. And so they need that one-on-one. But the second thing I wanted to say is, none of this is possible without her, truly. Our multi-system of support is, it's tremendous. And so our RTI system, MTSS is the new language, I'll just go back to RTI, but RTI system is, is pretty robust now. And the way that we progress monitor kids, you know, to see when a student is progressing, do they come out, do they go in, the way we watch the data, the way they set goals for students, to work on exactly what they need, which connects back to all the DDI stuff that you've heard us talk about. The way that all of that fits together into lesson planning, all of it, that connection to intervention, though, is what her department has done. Because we now have specific time periods, specific ways, she talked about the SAT meetings, to monitor kids. And Mr. Davis, I remember at one board meeting, you asked something to the effect of what, what are we doing to ensure that these kids are progressing and they're not, that we are catching them up? And so the system that they've created, and it's at all levels, it goes all the way up. And I'll say, when you get to high school, it's a little bit harder, because you don't, their schedules are different. But that system that has been built to monitor, teach, remediate, exit, just all of that, is, is pretty amazing. So if you ever have the opportunity just to look at that, but even go to the schools and visit the student intervention classrooms, minus reading recovery, and see how that looks, and, and the conversations that are happening around kids, I think you would be pretty delighted to see how kids are being helped and served. I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, Ms. Pernell, I just wanted to say, I was looking at this, and I was thinking, wow, they're doing this. And then I remembered your previous report, and it's a lot of tedious work that is happening. So thank you so much for your hard work. I have seen reading recovery, I was on a campus when I first started teaching that had reading recovery, and we had every student who had gone to that campus from kindergarten was reading on grade level by third grade. And if we implement this more of that district-wide level, I think we can do that early intervention to really ensure that our kids have the tools for success. And so I just really wanted to thank you for that and all the hard work. I've seen this firsthand, and it really is a powerful program. And I was, you know, when I was looking at the number, I felt, four students, no, we need more. You know, you just, you want every kid to have that individual intervention. But then I heard the grouping, and I was like, oh, okay, good. You know, small grouping, small group instruction, individualized, you know, really targeting students' needs is powerful. And yes, I just wanted to thank you for all your work. I'm really excited about this program. I believe in it wholeheartedly, and am, I'm so thankful that you and the lead teachers and our teachers are, are implementing this. I had one small question. Have we, you know, kindergarten, I know is not technically supposed to read, but some of those kiddos are kind of emerging readers, kind of by, you know, January of kindergarten, do we have these teachers, are they kind of speaking into kind of, are kindergarten teachers, are they giving them kind of helpful hints, skills?
The reading recovery leads last year, yes, they coached Kinder first and second. And so next year, the goal is, again, that these now teachers that are trained are going to coach. But also, the sit teachers look at Kinder. And so kind of what we tell them, okay, fall's beginning of fall, right, Kinder, and they're learning to read. But after the mid-year data, if we have data that shows they're significantly behind, then they start pulling them into your three intervention.
Great. That was my question. I thought, oh, we could catch them a little earlier in Kinder. Okay.
Thank y'all, because it's your support that has rolled this out and actually provided and supported the having the interventions in place. I mean, again, I spoke to this a couple, you know, two years ago, we didn't have interventions on every, every campus. So with your support, and Dr. Cannons, and Dr. Cornblums, I mean, I had the vision, but y'all helped me implement the vision, so I appreciate y'all.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Pernell. Okay, we will move on to item ten, items requested by trustees. This is to discuss, take action regarding safety of the design for Tennyson Middle School, GW Carver, and Waco High School. Mr. Davis?
The agenda item was requested is just for us to take action regarding the safety. We've, we've discussed it a couple of times now. I still stand with the beliefs that I don't think these designs of floor-to-ceiling glass walls in our hallways is safe for a variety of reasons. At the first board, board meeting where this was on the agenda, I heard a lot about the probability of being shot at, at a park, or different things that were to the point of us not needing a certain level of safety in our schools. And then one month later, we come back, and we did put in protections that I do think were needed for our officers. So I would ask if the trustees, if we felt like the threat was high enough that our officers needed active shooter training, if we felt like the threat was high enough that we need ballistic shields at every secondary campus, I'm not seeing why we wouldn't put those safety elements for our students. After our meeting, where we discussed this the first time, we had a hoax at Waco High School where I received video calls, pictures, text messages from students, and they hid, and were instructed to hide behind the very walls that will be glass in our new buildings. So I, and I don't think these glass won't have any ballistic protection. We've, we've asked questions to the architects, we've had presentations on the level of safety that the glass provides, and I don't think it's sufficient to protect our students and our teachers.
So I'll add to that. We went to a neighborhood association meeting, I think that was on Tuesday, where President Quarterwig was, was there, she was invited, Trustee Davis was invited, I was invited. We couldn't have a quorum, so we couldn't have any other trustees there. And in that meeting, we were asked by the president of the association, what would be different about this meeting from last meeting? And since the last meeting that we had, we did have the active shooter threat on September the thirteenth. We had the riot at Waco High School, where I believe we suspended close to 20 students at that, from that riot. We had a number of fights that ended in assaults, we have had teachers and principals that have been assaulted, we've lost a number of our behavioral aides at Waco High School because they've been assaulted, and because of the fighting and the lack of support that they feel there. And then we've also, we also, like Trustee Davis said, we agreed to give ballistic shields for our police officers, and we voted unanimously on that. And I asked at the end of that meeting that we be consistent and get the protections for our students as well. I know board members here have talked to students, they've talked to principals, you've talked to members of the community, and many of them have questioned you about the safety of our students and why haven't you voted to support our students and for them to be safe? And so, that's why we brought this back up, we have an opportunity here to come back and revisit this and put the proper protections in. We just had another shooting on October the 24th, I believe it was, in St. Louis, where a teacher and a student were shot there. And when you read those police reports, when you read those police reports, they tell you they found those students inside the classrooms where the doors were locked, the doors were barricaded with lockers, desks, students were hiding on the other side of walls. These are the protections that we're trying to take away from our students. This is my wheelhouse, this is what I do, is safety. And this is why I do continue to bring this up, we have to protect our students. We've had 40 active shooter incidents in this country, we've had 69 total shootings inside this country, the most ever recorded in history in this country, since they've been recording active shooter threats. We are in a culture of active shooter incidents and active shooterism, we are, this is what we are, where students are expressing themselves with guns inside schools, ex-students, students that are presently in the schools, these are internal threats, we're not talking about a masked man walking up to a school each and every time, these are students, these are babies, these are kids that are going in there and shooting other students. We have to think about that. We have to.
I would also like to add, our chief mentioned about the functionality of the ballistic shields were not only to enter a building during an active shooter situation, but also in the case of a riot at any of our campuses. And I think we also have to take that into consideration with the number of violent incidences that we're seeing at our school, that have been on the uptick the past three years, we have to consider what that will look like in these buildings. These buildings, we're literally building for the kids we have right now and that are coming up the pipeline, so we have to think, what happens in these situations, will this building keep our kids safe? Not only in an active shooter situation, but as our chief said, in the case of a riot. If the riot happens, if items are thrown, if kids are thrown into the glass and it breaks, are we putting our students, our staff, and our police officers in the best position to make it home safely? Because we want every student and every teacher to make it home safely if we can make that happen.
Thank you. I have a son that's a student at Waco High, who was on campus when the active shooter event happened, who was in a classroom with a teacher who tried her best to keep them calm. My son was scared to death mainly because he didn't know what was happening, he couldn't see anything. Thankfully, he had a dad on the school board who was able to text way too many times to our superintendent and others to find out what was going on, and because of that, we were able to tell his classroom what was going on, otherwise, he would have been overcome with lots and lots and lots of fear. My son is a big boy who has a great amount of confidence, who is not going to be easily intimidated, and he was shook, he was shook. He was primarily shook because he didn't know what was happening outside in the hallways. He didn't have any line of sight, and when he did open the door, he saw many, many men and women with guns in their hands, and that was a shocking incident in and of itself. I've thought a lot about that day, I've thought a lot about my son's presence in that day. And so, I went to five different schools to tour and see what can be different, how can we keep siloed kids, helping them be more informed, helping teachers to make better decisions, and why walked through campuses that you could see threats from 100 yards away? You could see wide hallways and open spaces and make a determination much, much quicker if something was going down. I do realize the difference between an outside intruder coming in and causing mayhem. That's our main target of the past, keeping folks that mean harm to our students, that are not students, keeping them out. And so, we've created the layered security that's in these plans. Of all the schools that we talked to, none of them had that layered protection, none of them were able to push a button and every wing shuts down. They did have barriers that came down, like ours will, that is required by fire code to suppress the fire, but it also keeps others out. But we must also face a really terrible reality, that if a student gets into a classroom or a hallway with a gun, it's going to be a tragic day. That's a very different issue. Because of that issue, in 1988, 89, when I was in high school, we installed metal detectors, because they felt at the time that was the only way to keep guns out of my school. I was in a school, much like Waco High, rougher, and so, they made the decision, the only way to keep kids and guns out of school is to install metal detectors at every entry point, we probably had 10 entry points, these new schools will have one. And so, I just say from my perspective, having a child that was there, that was present, that has never shook, was shook because mainly he did not know what was coming, and when he did see what was coming, it was lots and lots of men and guns. And if he, he felt relieved because of that, but it was also incredibly startling. If he could have seen them coming down the hall, or if a gate would have shut down that science wing where my son was, he wouldn't have been startled. So, I'm hoping for kids that don't have a dad on the school board, that need to have some insight into what's happening, that needs to feel like they themselves are informed, would have the ability to do that. And I'll close with this, I don't think it's fair to say that if we want ballistic shields, or not ballistic shields, but ballistic glass or hard walls, that we're for children, and if we don't, that we're not for children's safety. Because that's not true, that's just not true. I love all of my son's classmates, we heard about others, those are my kids too, those are my kids too. And since our last two meetings, I've received two emails from constituents, I think we all received them the day after the meeting, they were identical in verbiage, and one conversation with another person about concerns. So, in two months, with the shooting incident, I've spoken to three people that are concerned. And I've had lots of conversations about really challenging things that I've taken to our administration and other places about different things, I'm just not hearing it at all. And I would encourage you, if you are concerned, I'd love to hear from you. I just not have heard, I have not heard it from anywhere besides this podium.
One second, does anyone else have anything that they would like to add? Just want to make sure everyone gets a fair opportunity to speak. Mr. Guillory, I believe you have the floor.
No, I'm going to the information part. The reason why you talked about your son, he didn't know what was going on, is because of the lack of drills, and he didn't understand what the code was. Just like when you read about the St. Louis shooting, their code word was Miles Davis. Everyone in that school knew what that meant, and so, everyone was able to lock down, everyone was informed, everyone knew what was going on. At Waco High School, most of the administrators, this is a new campus with new administrators, most of the teachers, students, no one knew what the code was, and so, that's why your son was confused, and that's probably why a lot of students were confused, that's why you had students in the hallways looking out the windows, watching police officers drive up. It was a lack of drills, it was a lack of information, a lack of teaching. Since then, our police department has started the craze training, I attended that training, I sat in that class, and I asked Dr. Gutierrez to get it set up so our board can take that class, so we can understand the threat that comes about, the threat that we're up against. I asked Dr. Gutierrez to set that up, because I sat in there, and that training goes totally against what we're building here. It tells our students and our teachers to do exactly what those students and teachers did in St. Louis, to barricade the doors, to hide out of sight from the small glass window in the door. This is what this teaching actually does, it teaches our students and our teachers to hide, get out of sight, and it's what hide, deny, and fight, we can ask the police chief to come up here and tell us about the alert training that they have to take, tell us about the craze training. It goes totally against what we're building here in this district, it's totally against it. You talk about clear line of sight, for our students to be able to look out and see a gunman coming, that gunman can see our students as well, and that can kill every single student in that classroom. When that attacker went to St. Louis High School, he went to the first classroom and tried to get in and couldn't because it was barricaded, broke the window out and told everyone, you're going to F and die. But he could not get into that classroom, he went on to the next classroom, the next classroom, they did their job, they lost one student and one teacher that day, and the police chief in that city said it was because of their training, and it was because everyone knew what to do, and their reaction to that threat. It's, to me, I'm not saying that someone who votes for windows or against kids dying, I think it's a lack of information, a lack of training, a lack of knowledge on the topic, is what I think it is, I don't think it's that you don't care, or someone doesn't care, I think it's a lack of training, a lack of information, a lack of knowledge. Every, I've been to three different neighborhood association meetings, the first one we went to, we talked to Ms. Quarterwig, and Ms. Quarterwig was there. No one knew that there were glass classrooms coming into these schools until we told them. I went to Alta Vista Neighborhood Association Meeting, talked to them, no one knew there was going to be glass classrooms inside these schools. Once they do know and understand, they're like, why are y'all doing that? We're doing it in an era, again, a culture of active shooters, and we're building glass classrooms. That makes absolutely zero sense.
I want to speak to something really quick, as far as the two months, and as far as what, how much information you've received, or how many people reached out, I encourage the trustees at our last meeting to go seek information. So, to go to the classrooms, to talk to the teachers, to talk to the principals, to attend the neighborhood association meetings, to ask parents how they felt, and I have received overwhelming number of calls and text messages, and I've had a lot of conversations, even at the groundbreaking for Waco High. And I just also want to point out that these issues that we're talking about are not Waco High-specific, so these issues are found at all three of the campuses that we are considering right now, which is Waco High, GW Carver, and Tennessean. I as well have some kids that I consider my own that attend Waco High currently, and they FaceTime me as well because they know Mr. Davis is on the school board, because they wanted to know what happened. But, I've yet to hear from a student who didn't feel safe because they didn't have a line of sight. What I'm hearing is students didn't feel safe because they didn't know what was going on, they had to come back the next day and retrain on what the codes were and what they needed to do in that situation. The point that's being made is that, like Trustee Guillory just said, we get a line of sight, we get that you will be informed, we want our students to feel like they have all the information that they need to move about their day, but also with that line of sight, we're given a line of sight inside the classroom, and that glass does not act as a barrier that will stop any ballistic round, or bat, or anything else from going through that glass, so I think that's the concern. If trustees, last time we discussed this, we were saying it was a lack of information, and we had time to do our research, we had time to survey parents, we've had time to visit schools, and I think if we had, if we did that, especially at the three schools that we're discussing, you would have heard from teachers that expressed concerns, and administrators that had concerns, and definitely parents who have concerns, and the last thing I'll say, and I'll let you go, Ms. Quarterwig, is the lack of information that the community had is because we had an 80-member committee that decided what were our priorities in this bond, they decided the top schools that we needed to renovate or build new ones, and then we haven't communicated with the community since. We haven't had any session for parents to give input on the design, the elements of the building, we haven't had any input from any special community groups, we haven't had any input from our students, even the ambassador program at Carver is not to get their input on the actual design, but it's so that they could, which I'm a fan of, so they could see the process, and they can learn, and hopefully develop a love for the trade that's going on out there. So, I think the reason why we see a lack of knowledge in our community, and maybe a lack of emails that are coming to our inboxes, because people were not informed, and they were not a part of that process, which we've heard from several people that have came to our board to speak, that have spoke upon it. So, I would just encourage us again, whatever, if it's any information that we feel like is lacking, if there's data, if there's questionnaires, if there's interest groups, I would again encourage the board to table this discussion, and not deny the discussion, but to table it until we get the required information that we need.
Okay, so, Mr. Davis, I will entertain a motion, and we don't have that motion, so you'll just have to tell us what that motion is.
Good, I got one more thing, if you want to look up the information, because I've studied this at the federal level, at the state level, and at the local level. I actually thought we were going to have a closed session today to get this printed out for you, this is from the Federal Commission on School Safety. You also have the Texas School Safety Commission, and then you also can talk to our local police officers, our local chief, you can talk, we can bring in the sheriff's office, there's no police department, no safety entity that will be in favor of this, you won't find it. I've looked at this again, I have it here, it talks about the best practices for building school security, and it specifically says, this is from the Federal Commission on School Safety, it specifically says that you shouldn't have glass where people can see through and kill students, doesn't say it just like that, that's the gist of it, is having glass as a bad idea on the interior design of a school. People ask for data, they ask for information, these are the facts, Texas School Safety Commission tells you the same thing, it goes from Texas State, we're trying to send our police officers to alert training, that's the Texas School Safety Center, that's right there at Texas State, specifically on their website, it tells you not to put glass inside classrooms. There's yet to be a student, there's yet, a student that has been killed with a secure door in a secure classroom that doesn't involve glass, it hasn't happened yet. Again, federal level, state level, and local level, you won't find it.
So, if I could ask, what are you proposing at this point?
So, what I'm not asking for, I'm not asking to change the exterior design of the school, the glass all around the school, if y'all want to do that, I understand that. What I'm specifically asking for, and it doesn't have to be to totally remove the glass, you can have decorative brick up to seven feet, six feet, as long as the students are protected inside the classroom, you can run the glass from that point up to the ceiling. I'm not an architect in that area, I don't build schools. But what I did do is I did catch this and brought it to the board's attention, that this is a bad design, and what I'm asking for today is for you to reconsider that design to make our students safe. That's, I don't understand why we're even arguing this, we're talking about student safety. about student safety. I don't understand it. We, again, I, I just gave you statistics, 40 school shootings this year where people have been injured or killed. 69 school shootings total. The most in the recorded history of our country. We're in a, we're in a time and an era where it's just, it is dangerous. And what we have to do is we have to give our students the best chance at survival. And that's what all this, that's what all this talks about, is giving students chances for that four-minute response from the police officers to get there and the other six or seven minutes for them to find the shooter and neutralize the threat. Those students need time. And if you put them inside of a glass box, they're gonna die. That's just it. That's, that's, that's the facts.
Yeah, I would agree. I, I think I asked, it's the same that we've asked since the beginning, is that we harden the material that we're using in our interior hallways. Like trustee Guillory said, I'm not an architect either. So that's up to my architecture firm. We're just asking that we use a hardened material that will protect our kids better than the glass material that is being used currently. The motion, or do you, or?
Yeah, I'm trying to write whatever the motion is. Yeah, whatever.
Okay, the motion is to amend the design of Tennesse Middle School, GW Carver Middle School, and Waco High School to replace the walls with ballistic resistant material. That's it. So we're not saying what kind of material, that's up to the architects. We just would like it to be ballistic resistant material. Just like trustee Guillory said, I think I brought it up at several meetings, I'm okay with six foot of decorative brick, seven foot of decorative brick, and then the glass up, up the wall for the rest of the way. I just would love, especially, I, I think we would be remiss not to talk about the protocol that was mentioned last time. Trustee Grant brought up his son, and I, I'm concerned about my son as well, because he'll attend GW Carver and Waco High School. He's in a wheelchair. So I, I hear a lot, a lot about a plan about kids running and we're directing the kids to run away from the true shooters. I was given, I was told by trustee Quarterwig that we're asking the police officers to run inside, so that's why we have ballistic shield, but we're asking the kids to run away. So I think when we say things like that, we have to think about how that really will work for all of our students, because we empower and we value all of our students. Not a majority, not all, but a certain section. So we have to think about our students who might not be physically able to run away from an active shooter. And not just our students in wheelchairs, we have a variety of reasons that our students may not be able to run away during an active attack. So I think all of us, before we make this vote, which I ask to be a roll call vote, think back to the day of the hoax. I don't know how you guys received the information. I got a frantic FaceTime call from a young lady that will be graduating from Waco High this year, as she almost had a panic attack in her class because she didn't understand what was going on. So, and that's before we knew it was a hoax. So I would just take ourselves back to that day and realize that that was a stark reality and think about what would happen to our babies in these new buildings if they don't have anywhere to hide behind. Yes, the glass lets them have a line of sight, but if I had to pick a line of sight or a wall to protect against bullets, I would pick the wall. And I think all of us here would pick walls over the line of sight for our, our kids. I understand they might be startled, they might not know what's going on because they can't see the whole school at once, but I do think that as trustees, we have to make the best decision for the safety of our students.
Can I add one thing?
Oh, yes, Mr. Ochoa.
A couple of things.
Sure.
I, I, I think, I think it puts the board in a, an interesting position because it, regardless of whether we say it is or not, it becomes a vote for, are you for kid safety or are you not for kid safety? So the question that still confuses me, and I, I understand your passion, I appreciate it. I understand your fear. I got there shortly after the cops did. I was on my way back to work for lunch. I have a daughter in Waco High. And it's terrifying. And, and what, what I can't understand is, so if we go back to September of last year, there was a vote on the design of Waco High, and that passed unanimously. And there was a vote in October on the design and materials of Carver, and that was passed unanimously. There was a vote in January of this year, and that was passed unanimously. There was a vote in February of this year on the design and materials, and that was passed unanimously. And then in Febu, or I'm sorry, April, the schematic design of Tennesse was passed unanimously. So I guess my question is where, where were those, because we spoke about voting unanimously and needing consistency on the board and, and seeking information for the, from the community, but, but also, you know, if we have that responsibility, maybe it should be our responsibility to put forth that information to the community. And, and why now? I mean, we, I wasn't on the board at the time, so I don't know, but we, it seems like we, we either didn't have all the information then, in which case, why would we keep consistently voting yes? Or something changed in between April and July of this year? I'm just curious.
It's a good, it's a good question.
Oh, sorry, keep going here.
That's what he was asking.
Yes, sir.
It's, it's, it's a, it's a good question, and, and you, you kinda answered it within the question. All the information wasn't there at the beginning, the design, the actual design, the classroom that we saw when that classroom was presented to us, and the question was asked, is that, is that glass? When they finally presented it, that particular design. We saw other schematics and we saw other designs, but we never really saw the classroom. Once we were able to see the classroom, that question did arise. And what we were told was there was a safety area for the students to retreat to. That was, that was the answer to that. And they presented it again. And it was a more, you know, inline, in front of you classroom, and you can see it. And I said, well, where are those students supposed to escape to? I thought there were some sort of escape area for them, and it wasn't. And you can hear me on the mic when I, when he told us there's nowhere for them to go, I said, well, we can't vote for it. So early on, that design wasn't presented to us. When it was presented, the question came up, it was answered, didn't see it on the next design, that's when it was voted against. And so the consistency's been there when the information was there. So hopefully that answers your.
Questions on safety have been asked at each time that we've ever seen a design. I think at the last meeting, someone asked a similar question to what you just asked, and they gave us the dates in the board meetings that we unanimously voted. And I think the chief of staff at the time, Kyle DeBeer, he even read quotes from me and trustee Guillory, where we brought up safety concerns numerous times before we voted against the design. As trustee Guillory said, we were told it would be localized safety areas in these, in each classroom. We were then told that those localized safety areas were kinda knee-high slabs of concrete, and that wouldn't suffice. So that's how we got here. I would encourage the trustees, I understand, looking for board consistency and wanting to make sure that we're making informed decisions, but I don't think, I think right now what the concern should be are, is, is this design safe? Not, did we speak up fast enough? I think the, the, the bottom line is, do we think this design is safe for our students? We did speak up on the safety concerns from the beginning, but do we now, as a board, with the information we've gotten from Waco PD, community members, from our own research, are we willing to make the decision to keep glass walls that we have been told several times don't have ballistic protection of any sort? So that, that, that's really the decision that's on the table right now. We can go back and forth about dates and times we have brought up safety. I do think it's pretty consistent. I remember sitting here bringing up safety concerns, I think, every meeting. So I, I do think at this point, we just have to decide as a board of trustees, are we willing to go forward with this design? I, I, I think we should amend it. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. So we have a motion on here to amend the design of Tennesse, Carver, Waco High School, replace the wall with ballistic resistant material. The motion was made by Mr. Davis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Guillory. Thank you so much. We can continue to have discussion on this. I think I have been thinking about this very deeply, and I know that, you know, Mr. Davis said on here, I believe it was Mr. Davis, I was trying to take notes, but it said, every student to make it home safely. And I think every single person on this board actually feels the same thing. We want our students and our teachers to be safe. It is of utmost importance that that happens. And, you know, I think that there is, everyone here on this dais is a volunteer who volunteers their time and their services for our children. And I would say everyone on this board here deeply cares for and has concern for the kids in our district. There are a couple of things that I do know, and that is that every member on this board has done talking and research and visiting schools and going to the Texas Association of School Boards and talking to different architects all and throughout the state of Texas. Everyone has been reading the school safety reports. We have been looking and researching. So I just wanna thank Mr. Davis and Mr. Guillory for their perspective. But I also think there's five other people who've also been doing research and have Everyone here is different. It's, when I have, as I have done my own research, I have been going through, and I remember Mr. Guillory had posed a question of time. We need to give students time. We need to give officers, sorry, officials, time to get to any type of perceived threat. And as I walked the halls of a very similar high school, I saw time layers embedded in and throughout the high school. I spoke specifically to a principal who had a shooting in her school. And she talked also about kind of these time layers, and these schools are designed with time layers and barriers. Sections of, it basically sections off the entire campus, and, you know, with some of these grades, specifically in the middle school, it allows for an exit. So if, it allows for our kids to exit in this hallway and not stay in the building. You know, I think that that is important in this design. I, I also read on the St. Louis, there was also one in Austin, Texas, North Austin, a shooting at a restaurant. So I, I agree that there is a upsurge in violence, but I think the school is one piece and there's a community, there's a need for us to be neighbors again. There's a need for us to come together because these, these issues aren't just solved in school design, they're solved when we become neighbors. They're solved when we, when we get involved in kids' lives. And quite frankly, there really is no school design that would, you could have bulletproof glass, you could have cinder block walls, but if a kid is inside a school with a gun, that, that, it's lost, we've lost. And if they're in, this to me feels, so, we have, we've, we've, we've thought very deeply about this. Again, we've gone through, but I think, and there, I feel like I have so many things here to kind of, I, I agree, the sense of safety is important for kids, it's important for adults. And as we've gone to tour schools, you go in there and you ask those questions, and you ask the hard questions of the teachers, and you look for distractions. And, you know, when we walked into this school that is kind of like one that we're, we have designs for, it wasn't a terrarium. It didn't feel, it felt like a school. It had, the glass was like a door length, the floor-to-ceiling part was like a door length, and then there was like an observation window, for lack of better terms, but there was still wall. And there's, safety and education is this wonderful, is this thing that we have to weave together because we're a school district and we are charged with making sure and ensuring our kids are competitive in this global market. And there are things that this administration has been doing, that has been proactive in trying to reach kids before they even get to high school. So I think that, you know, when I look at even tardies and absences, there's a, even a proactive thing in that, in engaging with the families and I just, you know, and spoke to the principal at this campus and, you know, said, okay, what, you know, they had a protest and they said it was helpful to have these, you know, huge 14-foot doors that could close because they could contain it, talk to the students, so it didn't get out of control, and it provided safety kind of for the day-to-day. And when I look at it and think through it, I mean, I, as a teacher, probably, I would not want to be in a complete glass-walled room, so that's why I went to go look.
Especially.
The, I'm speaking, the art, art classroom had a wall of glass, absolutely. It had floor-to-ceiling glass, there was a floor-to-ceiling glass. That room had an exit to the exterior courtyard. So there was an immediate exit for that. So I think, you know, this board is diverse. This board has a variety of perspectives. It's kind of like the Bible. When they write about an incident, you've got four different perspectives writing about the same thing, but it adds a richness to it. And so I think really, I know that Mr. Guillory, one of his strengths is learning, which is actually the same as our superintendent. I know that Mr. Davis, one of his strengths is belief, and I appreciate that. So I appreciate Mr. Guillory's study, I appreciate Mr. Davis's strength of belief. I appreciate Mrs. Izetti's consistency. I also appreciate the strategy and the harmony that is also on this board. And I think that we, I'll speak for myself. When I look at this design, I take in all the information, speak with people, I actually would prefer my daughter be in a campus like this than the one that she's currently in because I see the safety features and layers. And I actually would feel more comfortable with my daughter being in a campus that's designed like this than the one that she's in right now. And I feel like we have discussed this at length, and I know that a lot of our, my fellow board members have talked, spoken about that. And so I thank Mr. Davis for calling a roll call, but I call the question and end. And so I thank Mr. Davis for calling a roll call, but I call the question and end discussion, and let's take a vote.
Okay, I do have one more item for discussion.
Wait, no, I, the, when you call the question, it ends discussion. Ms. Boyd will now take a roll call vote.
So do you not have to ask if there's further discussion before you call for a vote?
Mr. Rusik, could you come to the dais, please? We have a parliamentary question.
The motion for the previous question, call of the question, the motion to close debate, those all describe the same thing. Once that motion is made, it requires a second, it is not debatable, it's not subject essentially to any other motion, and it requires a two-thirds vote to pass, which among this board requires an affirmative vote of five.
Mr. Davis, do you have a question?
We have to vote to vote.
Get the vote to call the question.
To call the question.
It has not been seconded, so the.
Mr. Gilery has seconded it.
Excuse me?
No, she, he's talking about the motion to call, right? The motion to call the question has not been seconded yet, so we cannot move forward until it's seconded and then voted on and has a two-thirds majority. So right now, we would need a second if we were gonna call the question, and then we have a two-third majority vote, correct?
Doesn't matter.
I second.
I'll go sit down. You've got a motion and a second.
Okay.
And let's do a roll call on that, too, please.
Mr. Rusik, are we voting to vote right? No, we've, we're voting on the motion to call and discussion.
That's a, that's a very, very good question. It's something that is frequently confused by organizations and bodies. When there is a motion and a second on calling the question or closing debate, you vote on that motion, and if it, and it's not subject to debate, you just vote, and if that has a two-thirds affirmative vote, then you go back and vote on the pending motion. That's why it's called, I call the question. The question that's being called is the motion that Mr. Davis made and that Mr. Gilery seconded. That's the question that's being called. You're voting now whether you're gonna have any further debate on that or not.
Madam President?
Yes.
I would, I would like to say that we, we talked a lot about our personality and stress.
Mr. Rusik.
There's no debate, we, we didn't call the vote, though, right?
There's no debate.
Did we call the vote?
There's been a motion for the question and a second. There's no debate, you vote on that, that's what the rules require.
So we need to vote on that?
We're voting on stopping discussion.
Yes.
We understand, we understand. We could just call the vote.
So, Ms. Boyd, would you pull the dais? To stop discussion, yes.
I'm gonna vote no, and a no vote is to keep, continue discussion.
Vote yes.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Okay, so now we go to, okay, so yeah, so, sorry, it is a five to two, five in favor to opposing, Mr. Gilery and Mr. Davis to call the question. Mr. Rusik, now, just to clarify, we will now be going to the actual motion that was proposed by Trustee Davis to amend the design of Tennyson Carver Waco High, correct? Replace with ballistic-resistant?
Yes, ma'am, that's the motion that's pending. Unlike the motion the board just voted on, that does not require a two-thirds vote, that requires the typical vote of a simple majority.
Okay, so, I will, yeah, let's do a roll call, yes, so sorry. Excuse me, yes, you're right.
Vote no.
I vote no.
I vote no.
Okay, Ms. Boyd, so, excuse me, I'm so sorry, you had the public comment. Thank you. Order. It's time, it's time for you to go ahead and leave. Ms. Boyd, thank you so much. We have a motion that has passed, five to two, two people dissented, that is Gilery and Trustee Davis. Excuse me, you're gonna have to watch your language, please, I'm so sorry. Uh, thank you. Yeah, mine also, thank you. So, we are now on to announcements.
Good evening, President Cordery, trustees. We've had, as Dr. Kincaid showed you in her superintendent's report, it's been an exciting month already in the district, and looking ahead is much of the same. This coming Monday, on Halloween night, Waco ISD and Waco ISDPD will be hosting a trunk-or-treat event at the Waco Athletic Complex. That's sure to be fun for families and anyone in our community, it's open to everyone. As Dr. Kincaid also mentioned, we've rescheduled the Carver Middle School Student Ambassador Site Tour to next Thursday, November 3rd, and we'll be including information in your newsletter about that. Dr. Kincaid also showed you the calendar of the Thanksgiving meals. I wanted to flag, though all of those are sure to be delicious and fun, Crestview Elementary's 70th Birthday Celebration falls on their Thanksgiving dinner night, and that will be hosted at Waco High School, anticipating a large crowd that will be at dinner, and I've heard from Chef Julia that we will be having some special cake in addition to pie. So definitely mark your calendars for that. And then, something to celebrate, but also just to give you a heads-up to stay tuned on details, our University High School football team has made the playoffs.
Yes.
So congratulations to University High. We will be celebrating them, and also looking forward to sharing details about any sort of celebration that goes along with sending them off to their playoff games.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you so much, we are adjourned.